Alright, everybody, we're gonna start this meeting before we start. Put your phones to vibrate and sound for the rest of the meeting. Just to keep everybody from getting interrupted. Also, tonight, I know there's a lot of different issues that's come up. I know that the Food City issue is one. We've had some dealings with rope. We want to stay respectful tonight and treat each other with respect. So I'm just gonna do it at this pitch and go solid quick. Everybody should be proud. County Executive, would you please say a prayer?
Let's pray. Well, kind gracious Father, Lord, we come to you once again. God, thank you for all your many blessings in life. Lord, I pray, as I've done so many times the last couple of days, that you be with each and every one of our leaders. God, be with our schoolteachers, our children as they travel back and forth, Lord, and each and every one that has a part in the future of not only our county, but our nation, Lord. I pray, God, that you'll be with our nation. I pray, God, that you continue to bless Polk County. And as John said, Lord, I pray that if there's anything or anybody here within the agenda, Lord, that you not let it be spoken. Then we do all things to honor you. In your name, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Say, do you believe in the Lord?
Praise your name in the name of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Polk County Commissioned meeting, August 7th, 2013. I place a key to the third panel. So, roll call, please.
Keith Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman.
Here.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Much Davis.
Here.
Chrissy Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Pivenger.
Here.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Have the motion by friends?
Second.
Second by Harley. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is approval of notice. We have none for red. Any handed out? Alright, so we'll go down to number four. Budget amendments. You should've had, uh... By having it in the packet, uh... Four or five in the packet, and then three handed out? And I don't know. Now, make sure everybody has number six. I handed it out, I don't think everybody see it when I handed it out. Does everybody have number six?
Yes.
Okay.
I gotta extra.
Oh, number six. So, number one, and these are all 101 amendments, I believe. So, 101 was scheduled on, uh... Reserve Register of Dates. Three, four, five, one, zero, an amount of $1,650. Going into 5160709 for the same amount. Motion number two, this is number 101. Thirty-four, five, twenty. General Sessions. Let's see, is that automation reserve? $2,643.96 going into 5310709. Certain foot data processing for the same amount. No, there's a correction there, three cents.
Yeah, I have the correct one.
You have the correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have, what was the actual source number?
Why is it 96? 96.
96 is the correct number?
Yes.
And then 93 on the expenditure total? That should read 96. And you did that correctly first?
I did.
Okay. Number three. This is number 101. Forty-six, 130, Childish Trade Program. Going into 55110599. Help other charges for the same amount. Number four. Thirty-nine thousand, which will be the fund balance. The amount of 51,423 dollars. Going into 5190502. General Administration Building Insurance. Is that, that is the insurance claim, right?
Yes.
Okay. For the same amount. Number four. Thirty-nine thousand, which will be the fund balance. The amount of 51,423 dollars. Going into 5190502. General Administration Building Insurance. Is that, that is the insurance claim, right?
Yes.
Okay. For the same amount. That was number four. Number five. Number 101. Thirty-four, five, ten. Reserve Register Dates. Going into 5160709. Data processing. $96.75 on both sides. Number six. 101 dash thirty-nine thousand. The fund balance, the amount of $1,600. Going into 5690599. Parks and Recreation. For the same amount. Number seven. 101 54230 dash 355. My turn, $50 going into 101 54230 196. In service. $3,280. That's a wash. Number eight. Forty-six, 120. Airport Maintenance Grant. $4,989. And 5822702. Airports Improvements. For the same amount. That's a wash through. On that accounting, Lord. So we have 128. Do I have a motion of motion approved? Have a motion by Much Davis? Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Kelly? And are there any discussion on this?
Um, that number four, the insurance. Was that just, is that how much it went up, or...?
Yeah, so last year, and this is always done, premiums were sent out before we ever did the budget. So this is something to think about. Last year was 220,000ish, and this year is looking 280,000. So it's went up definitely.
Any other discussion? I'll put one in on number six. That money is money that was given to the east side, Parks and Rec, last year. Then it was given to the west side as well, to equalize it out. By the time it come to the west, the POs had shut off for the work to be done. And that part fell back into the fund balance, and this is a way of bringing it back up, what was given in. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is number five, private act, that's the courthouse, there was nothing in the packet. I think you had it.
We've, uh... Well, the hospital, you know, we've got good news on it. And I think it's all going on together, the good news on the hospital, which will address the end of meeting. So, we'll discuss that.
Number six. Follow-up from the committee. Commissioner Dave Davis.
I think we've got everything pretty much covered, touched on where we're at tonight. Uh, we'll be calling another committee meeting here in a few weeks. There's, we probably will be addressing in further detail about these driveways and things, private roads and county roads. So, anyway, that'll, that'll be a little bit down the road, but I think as of tonight, we're good to go.
Okay. You all right to move on then?
Yes, we are.
Alright, next is 911 Board. Application of county executive.
So, Matt Christ, it's my recommendation to the board for the 911 Board for the opening of the vote.
And the application wasn't in the packet, but it's forwarded. So is that your nomination? Or is that your recommendation nomination?
Yes, sir.
So you have the nomination power on the 911, correct?
Correct.
So that is the nomination from County Executive. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept that process, the 911 Board member for voting.
Motion by Harley, second by Much Davis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next is grid, the Oakwood Fire Hall. RFP County Executive, you had that on.
Yes, sir. There was only one RFP submitted, was it for the fire hall, and it was by HNL, H L Construction, in the amount of $69,951.
This falls in Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Bowman's district. Have y'all got anything on this, uh, that you'd like to speak on?
My, well, two issues, if you count them issues. To me, it's a little more than kinda what I had in the head, is gonna come in and out. And then, second of all, we just had one bid. I hate for the bid, if it is too much, just we got nothing to pair it to. So, I think we need to, uh... Either talk on the phone, or meet back down there at the building, and see if there's anything we can modify, take out. I don't think there is. But definitely need to re-bid it, and then encourage anybody, you know, make sure we get the word out, the bid on. You know, it's always good to set at least three bids on any project. And this would just seem high to me.
That seems extreme.
And it's just gonna be a bid too. So, anybody in the audience, I, this is a big crowd. If you know anybody that does constructions, tell them we're gonna be taking bids on finishing Oakwood Fire Hall. You know, more bids better. So, my recommendation would be to re-bid, and open them at the... Or have an opening date, and accept the bid at September 8th.
So you want, that's gonna be my question, so September, okay. What gets asked then?
I mean, we want to do it ASAP, so we can let the bids at September 8th.
I need a motion to reject the current bid on basis of excessive cost. That was my motion. Okay, so that is a motion to reject the current bid. And that, that it was due to the cost analysis team outside the Congress.
Yes.
Believe it or shit.
Greg, would you all want to kinda hold that opening and then do it here to commission meeting? Or do you want us to go ahead and do it like what we have done 10 days prior, then get...
Well, we can do the bid open 10 days ahead of time. That gives us time to review it, and then we'll award a maximum date in September.
We used to open pro car bids in the middle of the mission meeting, by the time we were done, it was less.
No problem. So that deadline, if anybody wants to know, so that deadline to get that RFP in will be 12 noon on September the 11th. That'll be Monday, September the 11th will be the deadline, the opening will follow. And that way it'll come to the commission meeting on the 21st.
I have a motion by Brooks.
And you get the paper this week, right? Well...
I have a motion by Brooks, second by Harley, to reject the current bid. Uh, any other discussion on that? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes, and the RFP will be sent back. They can do the contact, the, the, from this time, to make sure they know that they are eligible. You mean it? Yeah. Uh, okay. Chair, chair. Yes, take your comments from the audience on that? Uh, we'll, yes.
Uh, yes, sir. We advertise items in the builders exchange. If you want to contact that, I can pass that on if you want to advertise that.
That was a little... I mean, we won't have, we won't have all the bids we can get, so yes. Next is sanitation bid, County Executive pageant.
Library, anybody?
The library is County Executive pageant. We're just gonna take care of it.
I'm sorry, I had to say that.
Hold it out there on a deal.
So, um, if you all noticed your emails for the library lease, there was one word change, and that was "has". So, outside of that, that's the same that should've been in and everything as it, it comes through to this commission. I do have a resolution. I have met with the Friends of the Library, and met with County Attorney, Eric Brooks, as far as drawing everything up within this first lease agreement. So this will be Resolution 81. Resolution 8123. Resolution approving the commercial lease agreement between Polk County Friends of the Library Association as a landlord, and Polk County Tennessee as a tenant. Identify this Exhibit A in a package hereafter, and incorporate herein by reference, and Number Two, authorizing the County Executive to execute commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County Tennessee, whereas Polk County Friends of the Library Association owns the property located at 126 Polk Street in Benton, Tennessee. Whereas Polk County Tennessee currently leases a portion of the building located on above reference property for the West Polk Public Library. Whereas Polk County Friends of the Library Association and Polk County Tennessee desire to enter into a new commercial lease agreement with the rent at the amount of $100 per year, and upon the terms and conditions set out in this commercial lease agreement. Identifying Exhibit A attached here too, incorporated hence in reference. Now therefore be resolved by this legislative body in session and assembled, that one, the commercial lease agreement between Polk County Friends of the Library Association and Polk County Tennessee, identified as Exhibit A, attached here too, incorporated here by reference, is approved. And two, that the County Executive is authorized to execute this commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County Tennessee. Be it further resolved, that this resolution take effect from this and after its passage, and the public welfare requirement on this 17th day of August 23.
Do I have a motion to approve 8123 of the resolution?
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Debbie Davis. Second by Much Davis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Do I have discussion?
What did we pay last year, Chris?
If I'm not mistaken, there's, there's been nothing as far as actual payout. Lori, I thought I seen Lori come in. Do you know the exact amount, or if that was even being paid out for the West?
It was like a dollar a year.
Oh, it was. And I do know that the East is, and that was another thing that the Friends of the Library had discussed, because at the amount of this, at a hundred dollars a year, and they said that they would be willing to do this for a couple of years, but ultimately they would be looking to get a little more for the lease that they are getting inside of the building than what we do have. There are some other offices in there, in the building. And I'll make this statement, 'cause I've had different ones. They have one water meter, one electric meter, so it's kinda hard to get the other offices that tie in. So the county, we take care of 60% of that, that way if other tenants or anybody else is inside of that old building, they, they do pitch in on their part.
Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pivenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is sanitation bid, County Executive pageant.
We found ourselves once again with sanitation. Just to kinda catch everybody up to speed right quick, um... I was made aware of our current hauler, that since an executed contract was not in place with Priority Waste in Polk County Government, that they wanted out of this contract. The reason for that was, is whenever we got the contract from Priority Waste, it took a little longer to get it back to them. By the time the attorney got done with it, and so whenever the view company came in, according to our records, they received the lease agreement from our county attorney on the 29th of January, and Priority Waste sold out on the 30th. And so now the current hauler says, "We want out", and they want out by September the 1st. So we turned these out to bid. I do apologize for not being in your packets. We were trying to hold them for as long as possible with anticipation that we might get multiple years. The only bid that was received was from Universal Waste. Universal Waste was our previous hauler, if you remember. Todd has said that he has newer trucks now, and that depending on how this vote goes for this legislative body, that he would have a new truck in the coming days. That he did not want to provide that new truck if he did not have this agreement on form. Some as well as asked because of the 3% increase that follows over the five years. I talked to Todd today, I talked to Eric Brooks as well. According to Eric, who is our attorney, as well as Todd's attorney, that there was an addendum put on to this agreement, that after three years, that it would be re-looked at between both powers of being, myself and the owner, Todd Walker. And Todd has agreed that there would be no more than 3%, but there would be the possibility of zero. That's almost like if you would whenever the ambulance service, in the contract that we had with them before. There was an addendum to their agreement, and those talks could go on between myself and the former ambulance, former ambulance service. But those bids come back as follows. A one-year agreement, the goal from the city of Benton, or for the Benton Convenience Center, $375. South Polk Convenience Center, $375. Lindsdale Convenience Center, $400. Alliance is $425. Grassy Creek is $995. And Varner is $995. There, there will be, there is not a fuel surcharge in with Universal Waste bid, but it does increase 3% every year as it goes forward. But Todd has said that as long as those two 3% increases are understood, that going forward with an addendum to that agreement, that he would look at pulling the 3% off the table.
County Executive, was there not a, an increase on fuel surcharge at $5 and more?
That falls, yes, that falls on in. There is a 10% if it gets over $5 per gallon, it's in the box. But as far as the fuel surcharge, like what we have currently, that's not figured in. It only has fuel surcharge at $5 or more. Five.
It says $595.
$595. Did what I say?
You said $995.
No, five, I'm sorry, five. No, 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 five, 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 five ninety, five. Yes, 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 no, 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 sorry about that. No, 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 no. And one other, one other, so with the open tops that we have, um, with Priority Waste, Priority would make this pull on open tops every 30 days. Does not, did not matter if they had 500 pounds, or if they had 5 tons, they were gonna pull every 30 days. Universal says, "We don't wanna make no more trips than we have today." So we do have things set up with different people that'll come out and pack on those for us. We can get more tonnage in those open tops, so therefore you won't have to have it pulled every 30 days.
That was gonna be my question. Did we have to do that every month?
No.
Alright.
No. But now there is an increase on the open tops. They went from 125 to 55, if I'm not mistaken. And that's at any site that, that we would choose to ever have those at. But the pulls, so if, if an open top goes to the center, the open top pull costs the same amount as anything else, but there is a $250 a month rental fee for that open top to sit down.
I love Commissioner Carter. Talking so long with this. Do you have anything you can say on this?
No, I was just wondering if we could in, or in too. Negotiation, you know, send that here.
Try to reduce the 3% increase this year. That's one thing on this, the 3% after the base year, it was about 3% for the next quarter. And that 3% was compact. It was 3% of the prior year, not 3% of the base, it was the first year. One of the questions Commissioner Carter had asked was if we could negotiate in that new way. And Robbie, I think you said that they would be willing to do a three-year contract with two one-year renewals and have, uh... Give and take almost three additional years?
Correct, for both parties to be able to sit down. Like what, like what used to be done with, when AMR was in our ambulance provider, that was the same thing with their contract.
So three years with two, uh, two additional years, uh...
In an addendum, yes. And just to put that in, put this in perspective, I know some have asked the ones, that looks like monthly what we were running out. So, July, this past, this past July, we spent $30,754.55 to haul. At this, at this new rate, with the same amount of pulls, it would've been $32,830, so $2,000 a month increase. And in June, we spent $36,302, and it would've been $2,200 more, that's $38,520 with this new provider. But you also, you would lose some of those pulls on the open tops, because, and I'll pick on Much for a minute, because Much thinking like I did, the Varner open top, and if he got back down, it could've lasted 30, 40 days more. But because it was contracted to be pulled every 30 days, it didn't matter if it had 500 pounds in it, or if it had 3 tons.
And they are willing to hold off on a pull if, if we're not, or we need to be on, on a scheduled pull.
Correct.
I'm not talking about a scheduled contact.
Correct. And that was another issue that was coming from Priority Waste. They were coming from Saudi days. So they had an hour and a half, two-hour drive before their driver ever even got here. So whenever that driver got here, he was gonna pull something. They, they didn't care if it was a scheduled pull, or if it was a haul pull, they were gonna pull something. And then with South Polk side, because South Polk has to be pulled at the end of the day, well, they got that two and a half, three-hour drive back home on Friday, and so South Polk ended the day pull at 2:00. The pre-crusher at Benton ended the day pull was about 1, 12:30 to 1:00. And so what would happen is, is our Friday pre-crusher, it wouldn't have four tons on it. And that was the end of the day pull, because they had to get South Polk last. And every now and then, we would run into the issue on a Monday, when you've got two pulls at Grassy Creek, you've got three pulls at Benton on that Monday. Well, guess what? South Polk would suffer because that pull on Friday was so early, it filled it on up on that Monday. Priority has done a good job. I will, I do want to say that. They have done a good job, but they have pulled things that are lighter, didn't want really to be pulled, but it was because that driver traveled in the two and a half hours over, and to get back home within a lot of time. So they had to adjust their schedule, which affected some of our plans.
But they are a little more than a scheduled pull.
Universal Waste is, because they will be located out of Cleveland.
Do I have a motion on this? And keep in mind that they are willing to do a three-year contract with two one-year renewals. And that's what we decided to do.
And that will go through our county attorney.
Yes. Have a motion by Much Davis. So is it now, is that on the three-year, or the three or five? Three or two one-year renewals, you got? Okay, I have a motion by Much Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Danny Carter. Okay. Any discussion? Robbie, what was the estimated, uh, increase?
It'd be $24,000, $2,000 a month, uh, if what, if they estimate that. It was, it's estimated at. Yes, and that's, that is, like I said, I'm still going to figure it a little higher, because I'm leaving those open top pulls in there. But we should see less of them, especially from Benton and Farnor. And South Polk, South Polk, anybody down the lower end knows anybody's got a way of packing a box that would help us out, that would come in really handy, just to get it kind of pushed down a little more, so you could get more tonnage on it.
I had it figured about $15,000 a month. You took that fuel surcharge too, by the way, on the last year's?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion?
And now that, so with that, all I done was, was took, so it would be, so $2,000 a month would be based off the same number of pulls that we have had, based off of what the tonnage, or the haul, the pulls will be with Universal Ways. So apples to apples, it was about $2,200 a month, based off the same.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Keith Barker?
Yes.
Shane Duffman?
Yes.
Greg Clark?
Yes.
Davey Davis?
Yes.
Lush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
No.
John Pippin Drew?
Yes.
Samantha Trapp?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. We are the addendum to come out, and this was. I wasn't sure who was coming on the agenda, and I had to call Jackie in the last minute and beg her to do the addendum, and she was gracious enough to do that. So we're on the addendum to the agenda, which is Food City Pilot program. And I actually just got my name back. That's great. So again, everybody gets their own opinion on this. There's multiple witnesses, and we're looking for harmony in this meeting there. Before we get started, we'll answer any questions that we can and we'll pursue. First thing is the resolution, and I, Christie, did you have that opposite role in that? Would you, would you be kind of interested in a very resolution?
This is the corporate resolution of the Polk County Industrial Economic Development Board. We be undersigned, being all the directors and shareholders of Polk County Industrial Economic Development Board, organized and existing under the laws of Tennessee and having its principal place of business at Polk Stock and Sparks, 128 Benton, Tennessee. The corporation hereby certify that the following is true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted at a meeting of the directors and shareholders of the corporation, duly held and convened on August the 3rd, 2023, at which a quorum of the board of directors was present and voting throughout, and such a resolution has not been modified, rescinded, or revoked, and is at present in full force and effect. Therefore, it is resolved, approved. Fifteen-year tax abatement presented by Food City, based on financials provided by Food City representatives to the Polk County Economic Industrial Development Board. Attached, this resolution, if approved, will be sent to the Polk County Commission for vote on abatement, as well as the official resolution provided by the Ginger Mason Law Firm to the commission, to be voted on by the commission on August the 17th, 2023. Performance metrics outlined will be defined utilizing the Food City Financial Review to develop clawback provisions as negotiated by Ginger Mason Law Firm for the Polk IEDV Board. These terms will include, but not limited to, annual sales tax to the county, employment projections, and elimination of the grocery sales tax. By affirmative votes noted as signatories below, a majority vote of the members of the Polk County Industrial Development and Economic Development Board with authority to bind the company, approves the form and content, content of this resolution to be effective immediately. Signed by Derek Sloan, the chairman.
That's it. I thought she said the one. Okay. Mr. Sloan. Do you have anything to add at this time?
There's nothing more than what was discussed at the board meeting. Unless there's any question, I don't think Mr. Spangler's here to question on the financials. So for his numbers, and I would certainly be part of him on financials.
Mr. Spangler is here from Food City. We don't have a motion, we're still in presentation mode, but I wanted to go ahead and ask the commission. Might as well ask the question before we take the motion, at least to an extent. Is there any questions for Mr. Spangler on the financials? Or Mr. Sloan on the IEDV?
Did we get a copy of this emailed to us prior to this? Because I didn't get one.
I had asked for one, and we were supposed to get it, but we didn't.
I thought it came to everybody. I, I had got one, but I thought it came to everybody.
I think I got one too.
Is it coming here either? Okay. And it was emailed, it wasn't texted from. So you got copies.
Who was supposed to send it to?
I didn't see mine. Shane didn't see his, I'm fixing to see hers.
Did you get one?
No, I'm with the board meeting.
And Rick Wright.
Here's the numbers that Derek showed. We're going to do the presentation.
Yes, that was from the IEDV.
Yes.
If you're talking about that, because I've got copies for everybody that I'm asking.
Can we have one of those?
Sure.
We don't even know what she just read.
Who was supposed to send this?
This does not put the resolution, this is just the number.
So Jackie don't have the correct resolution.
You don't have the right.
I have the resolution, but that's not the one.
You have a different resolution. Okay, that's not the one. Which one is it?
The one that I have never got, that's not the one. I have whatever it is. Whatever I have in my email.
Derek, could you come here a minute if you don't care?
I concur. We claim if there's questions about provisions. So all week this week, I've had numerous requests from commissioners for additional details, as many definitions as we could put in, but what we presented is exactly what was voted on last week at the IED, which is a very, very broad resolution, just authorizing us to negotiate with Food City, 15 years, putting clawback provisions. There were questions about specifically, what are those? Ginger's tried to work through the week on what those were, so there are different resolutions that's been sent to John to review from the commission, but what we presented is exactly what was voted on last week.
This was the one that was sent out to everybody, right? Then this was, somebody sent that?
That's sent to you, that was one we presented last week, and all the members of the IED voted on it. Yes, sir?
We didn't.
Okay, I didn't know why.
Why do you not send them off?
I didn't get it.
Brooks, I didn't remember, I didn't have.
We got that one that has that other number on it, this one. Yeah, what is that one?
That's probably the one.
No, that's a resolution.
And that resolution does?
Yeah, this is from Paul and Brandon.
Okay. You got it?
I got that one that has numbers. I don't have, I don't have the one she just read.
Okay.
The pile would agree.
This one was, that's what we had.
Okay, so y'all have that.
I don't, my name on it hangs through.
But you got it.
Yeah, that's what I had questions about. But the one that she just read, I don't have. I don't even know what that is.
That's the one that, what she read is the one that was voted on last week by the Industrial Economic Development Board.
This is the one that we got. What is this?
This is an additional revision that came Monday. As Ginger continued to define terms, and there was another one that came today. She continues to work and try to refine exactly what it is. This will happen multiple, multiple times, we go through it. So we presented a very broad one. You give us the authority to define all the clawback provisions, everything that should happen through the pilot program. Take a lot of work, still months and months of negotiation. Was that what was sent to the commission?
Yeah, I got that.
John Boyton has every one.
I sent that one.
So before anything ever happens, we'll hold on another one.
And you're getting in?
So this one authorizes us to finish the pilot. And according to Ginger, it would be very uncommon that a commission would come back and vote again after you give us the authority to work with Food City.
I just worry about this number, because we're giving them a 15.
Sure.
We're getting, I mean, you're getting a 15-year tax break.
We're requesting a full 15-year tax.
So when you get a 15-year tax break, we still have to make a maintenance effort with our schools. So we're losing tax.
Well, you're not going to lose maintenance every money, because it's never maintenance.
No, but we're going to have to make up for it if I don't make up for it, so it's bad.
No, no, because it's never been formally made a statement.
Okay, I got a question.
Can I?
You can go ahead.
I think the way the clawback is being envisioned, we have certain numbers that you've seen. I'm not sure if you've seen this before. But obviously, with our projections, leakage that we're bringing back into the county from St. Bradley County, Benton County, even the state of Georgia, you're looking to, even outside of the abatement, which is not being collected right now, it's based on our $15 million investment year one, you're still netting Georgia $400,000. If we don't meet that metric, then a pro-rata share of the sales tax, or the real estate tax, excuse me, that will be generated by the $15 million investment from year one, will be recaptured by the county.
I think it was. No question.
That's a clause.
So where does the 15 years come from?
The 15 years is really not as important a number to us. We look at the net number. So if we look here on the Polk County investment, the first sheet is just the calculation of the supposed projected taxes over 15 years. But on the net present value, that's about $533,000 that we look at as an offset to our initial investment. So that was the voting, so to speak, that we needed to do. If we could have gotten to 10, we would have requested a 10-year abatement. But unfortunately, with just the tax structure being just the county and not a city or a town involved, it took 15 years to get to that number.
I have a question, it's not really for you per se.
Sure.
So whenever this board was reestablished, when was this? Four years ago, four and a half years ago?
About.
Somewhere in that?
Right in the day.
Okay. So who, I guess who headed that up? And why was the initial resolution not looked at after it was, it was passed in '81? I mean, did not, did anybody not think to pull the original resolution to see if they even had the authority to do what they were told they did?
I think that kind of comes from the Remington deal that was done, that never come from the county, went through IEDV only. And the woman that's done it here with the Gersky.
Because I asked for it when there was just mentions of talks in January and February. And I said that would have to come back to the county commission at some point in time. And I was told no, because that's not the way the resolution was written. And then no one ever produced a resolution. I say that to say this, is had that, somebody produced that resolution, and Jackie didn't have to go do it for a couple of days to find it for me, this would have all been avoided. I mean, that's a 30-year difference that things could have been changed in that 30 years. They would have known from the get-go that they had the permission to do it, or they didn't have the permission to do it. So part of this waiting until the, going by words and wait till the last minute to produce stuff at a meeting, that's what happens. Not saying I'm not for it. I'm just saying that this was, has been blown up, social media, everything else. It could have been avoided.
To your point, I think that question was asked at the very first Food City presentation by Mr. Spangler, if the commission indeed had to vote to approve this or not. And I think that question's been open ever since, and that's what this resolution should resolve.
Right, and that's why the, the, we never at any point, I'm not going to speak for you, I'll speak for myself, but at no point did we ever think, or I ever think, "Hey, I want to vote on that, because I don't want it to happen." It was just at the end of the day, you can Google, you can go to C-Tech, you can look at, the county commission's responsibility is the tax levy. So that's one of our main responsibilities as a county commission. This, not saying it's not good, saying, saying it is good. I'm just saying personally, without property tax, that doesn't directly affect our tax levy. We can take some money from the school and gain it that way and make up for that, but then that's not really giving the school the excess amount that they need to build a school. So in the big scope of things, $78,000 seems like chunk change, and I've heard it at several of the meetings, $78,000, that's nothing. The county didn't have it, so they're not losing anything. But what you don't know is the county commission funds a lot of programs within the county that we are not responsible and we do not have to fund. Those are the ambulance, the 911 program, fire. They're volunteer, but we do do, they're budget.
We are not responsible for ambulance as of last year.
Huh?
We are responsible for ambulance.
Well, if that's changed, then that's changed within the last few months.
Last two years.
Well, it comes from the C-Tech website. So sanitation, we have to.
We don't have to take three.
Before, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about there's other programs that we do not fund. So this little bit of chunk change, that $78,000 that we never got, would help offset that. Again, I shop at Food City. I'm not saying I'm not for it, but we have to look at it from all sides. So I think we initially got the bad rep, saying we're not for it, for whatever reason. And at the end of the day, I believe you guys had the authority to do so. Backing out would set a bad example going forward for businesses. So that being said, I don't know if somebody else can speak on it. In the future, we will have it set up to where there'll be more communication between us. And I'm speaking for myself also. And but, all in the same breath, we can do all the buts and the cons and maybe that we should have and this and that. But in my book, y'all had the power to do it, you've done it. I feel like it's a positive move. If some other businesses sees a company as big as Food City doing good, I think it opens a lot of doors. So, you know, I maybe would have not been exactly for everything that y'all done, but you've done it, and I'm behind it 100% now. I feel like we can do nothing but move forward and give them our support. That's where I am. You thought you had the authority, and that's what you was told.
That's what we were told originally, but the question's been open for probably four months now. Do we or do we not? And that's why the resolution was written.
And going forward, this will not happen, because we're on the same page, and there'll be guidelines set up to work together on those.
We've certainly been open for a working session, and we're available at any time for that.
But clear the air, as far as the clawbacks, with them in place, we can guarantee everybody that with them, well, like I said, we will at least hit the minimum of what was promised to the IED board. If it don't show up in sales tax, it'll be reimbursed in property tax. So we'll at least get the minimum.
But based on a certain preparation. I think discussing with the attorneys working for the IEDV and other people that I've talked to, we look at it, it needs to be somewhat fair, looking at averages. So if we, you know, you know, project more, or actually generate more than what we're projecting, we get some benefit for that. So it's an average over a certain year. So it's just not at one time, in year five, that we potentially don't make it, but we've exceeded it substantially in the first four years. Obviously, we would get some type of. get some type of credit for.
I hope we exceed projections. But in advantage of low projections, the county covered those, those clawback clauses, to get the base of that.
That's why, that's why clawbacks in place, and discussing with Mr. Spangler and Eric Attorney, absolutely, that's pretty standard, we have a pilot agreement. And we're absolutely willing to do that with that comment that, you know, it'd be fair if we do exceed these projections every time.
That is my sweetie going up to all these folks.
Obviously, we want to get this door open first, and then we're always looking.
And if I could, for what Kelly had asked, so Mr. Logan was the one that came to me whenever I came into office, because our ID board had not been elected. Eric Wood says, yes, it was there.
It was theirs, it wasn't ours.
But there had been nothing. And so then the county attorney was the one that worked and helped to set this up as it went forward. And there was never any question until it got closer to, if I'm not mistaken, the first time Mr. Spangler and I sat down and talked was in November, you know, in the office. And that was one of the questions that he had. And so we never did really get a definite answer. After, I mean, Chuck Hammond was at the meeting with the Southeast, with the Southeast Tennessee Development District, Mr. Spangler was there, I had the ID board had talked about this, and the question came again. And then that was whenever it was brought up from not only the county attorney, but at the time, the ID board attorney. And so, and I don't think over the years, anybody would have ever said, you know, there's a possibility of a grocery store coming into Polk County and looking at something of this magnitude. And, you know, as you said, things have been blown up. And I will be sure, when Mr. Spangler first came in, it was going to try to be a lot like with the Marion County project. But whenever you sit down and you do the numbers, that ten-year, five hundred thousand was not there. It didn't fit into matrix. But it was never anything definite until we get to the point, because everything was being worked out between Food City, the ID board, you know. And I've had to go back because, you know, as you said, when you heard about it, well, this actually started back in September, October, November, before I brought it to the ID board. I don't know how hard it was to sit through family functions and people asking me, Robert, about the Food City. I don't know what I'm talking about. My office staff, it's like, I'm sorry, because we were trying to keep everything down until it came to this point.
Right. And I understand that. I just think that our county attorney should have had a copy of that resolution to begin with, and it would have been, I sent him a copy of the resolution when I got it. So it's hard to kind of know what you can and can't do. And with them being a new board, they're just taking somebody's word that they had that, you know.
The same, the same attorney was our attorney after a couple of months or two ago, so that's who we took advice from.
Well, and I, I don't have any issues personally with, with my colleagues. I just, I just, there's not a lot of communication.
I think we've, we've all learned from this experience.
And there needs to be communication and working together.
And, you know, we all will do better going forward.
The only thing that I, I want to ask for is before this ever goes into effect, I would like to be part of the, us to have a final vote on that final project. Because we need to, because we are, I mean, we're over these taxes. This is huge.
It certainly is.
And if we just give you the, we don't even know what number's going to be on there. And then, you know, if it's a number that's going to affect people's taxes, and we don't have a final say-so over it, they're going to look at us because we didn't, we didn't do our job. And I understand that you guys want the authority to do that. But at the end of the day, we have so many citizens that we have to worry about these taxes. And with it being this big, I think we should have a final say in the, in the pilot on whatever that number, final number is.
And maybe that's where the commission attorney and our attorney need to talk, because in talking to our attorney today, she said that would be very, very uncommon and not what she would advise.
Well, I think based off the resolution last month, that kind of sets the, the tone for that, that we're going to have to going forward, have to kind of agree on things up front about, as a commission, what we expect.
If we have boundaries that what you guys would approve, and if we have a project that needs to go outside those boundaries, then we need to come back to for prior approval.
Yeah. This one's big. I mean, this is huge. And, I mean, it is a great thing. I mean, it is. We, we do need it. But at the end of the day, we have so many people that we have to look out for. We're going to have to be part of that final agreement.
I, I don't have a problem with that. If Mr. Spangler does it, and the two lawyers will tell us that's legal. I'm not sure talking with Ginger, but that's appropriate.
I have no problem with working in good faith with any board. And that's why from day one, we wanted to know what the proper protocol for Polk County was. What, what I don't want to get in the position is, is this is what's agreed upon, and we're working in good faith, we agree with clawbacks, and we're under construction, because we're still finalizing the Marion County pilot agreement, and we're probably two-thirds done with our project, that for some reason it's frozen down. And it's just, you know, I don't want...
But you have to understand, like, my people that's from up here isn't going to drive forty minutes to the grocery store when we have a Walmart fifty-minute run. And, and that's nothing to do with you guys. But if you guys don't come forward with this, my people are going to pay for this, and that's not even use a store. So that's why I want to make sure that we're in the final part of that. I understand that you guys have, I mean, this is great. But I have to know that my people are taking care of. That's what I was voted to do. And at the end of the day, my people shouldn't have to raise their taxes for a store that we don't use. And I, I understand that, but I just want to be part of that final number that you guys have for the clawback.
I don't think y'all have any issue with working together. Do you?
Not at all.
Well, now, the current resolution that was read does not allow that.
That's correct.
It gives me the final, final say on this particular clause.
That's correct.
And I mean, I would like for it to be different. And that's the only thing that I have, that I want, because I want to be part of that, because we're not going to be using that.
Well, the sales tax then fits for the whole.
For the whole county and municipal.
If, if our, if our projection, just hypothetically, hits fifty percent of what we project here, you'd give fifty percent clawback on real estate tax, plus you'd need two hundred thousand dollars to get good.
All I ask for is to be part of the final part. I just want to be part of the final part.
It's just, I think in typical, the county commission will accrue the terms of the pilot, and then we will have one attorney to have, we have our working order.
And I, I actually have the Marion County agreement. If you want to see the Marion County agreement, I think it was approved in twenty-twenty-two, based on what I see. And your store may open in November of this year, so.
Number eight of this year is still being finalized. I know the Marion County pilot's been brought up, it's ten years, but it's with Marion County. We have a deal with Kimball, and they've also already contributed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to infrastructure with additional funds to come. So it's a little bit different animal, so.
Yeah, I think that's very important to highlight. I've heard a lot about the fifteen years, and why fifteen years versus other counties only do ten, where Marion County wrote them a check for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that, that's a big difference when you start adding years up versus, to me, writing a check, that's really on the taxpayers.
There's also a line that was moved.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a water line that Marion County did to construction at their expense.
Well, the way I can't see it, there's a two thousand dollar lot sitting out there.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to lose that two thousand dollars on that tax. And then, okey-dokey, we hope that this outfit more than subsides that. And that's the way I look at it. I mean, I know there's different ways you can look at it, but we wasn't getting it before. So let's roll and pray that it all works out.
In time, in time, it will all be wonderful.
Yeah.
It's just sometimes.
The benefit of Polk County, we've not seen, and I've talked to the IDB, the leakage going out of this community, just being, there's one grocery store, The Fresh and Huts, fifteen thousand square feet, it's essentially a convenience store plus, and this is going to be three times as large, a traditional grocery store. That's going to convert leakage going out of Polk County, but it's going to go, you know, to additional shoppers from around the...
Yeah, yeah. We'll get, we'll get some off the, the end of sixty-four.
Well, I'm sure there's some people in Duck Town, Copper Hill, in the area that, that work in Cleveland, even.
I was going to say, work in Cleveland or work in...
Get their groceries up on the way up the river.
Yeah. I got a call from someone who works at, at Tenoda, and apparently runs up here and flies to the Scott on the way home instead of getting off shift.
Having to fight Cleveland traffic.
Yeah, and they, 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 that's, that's, that's moving, you know.
But I do know, you know, I do know that, you know, up here, they're, they're desperate. I mean, I don't want to take that away from anybody up here. I know they need something desperately. And we hope that it, you know, something opens up for them at some point in time. Now, that, we make that very clear, we, you know, but, you know.
Well, if we don't move forward with what was already agreed on, then that's going to steer any new business away from our county.
Exactly, yeah.
Just from bad, bad business.
Just so you're aware, and there's absolutely no commitment from Food City, but we have emails back several months where we're already talking about what would it take to get a Food City location east side of the county. That email's documented. I think your chairman has a copy of that email dated back several months ago. So we don't know what it would take, and we'll certainly need your help. But if that happens, then it's good for the entire county.
Okay, we don't have a motion.
Like a motion.
Hold on. I have a motion.
Show up, Brad. I want your smoke.
We've got a motion by the end of this.
Yeah.
Shane said.
Let Shane have it.
I heard, I heard Shane.
Okay. I have a second. By Shane Bowman. Any discussion? Roll call. Now, this is on a resolution, eight, six, three, eight, two.
Eight, two.
Eight, two. Twenty-three. Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Hi, yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Parker.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Melch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kailin Morgan.
Yes.
John Piffler.
Yes.
Samantha Trent Pass.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we do have a word for suspension. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I need to say in the room right quick, for building issues.
Okay, we have building issues. We have a question for suspension. It takes two persons to suspend. A roll call on the building issue. Suspension. So Brooks, get it.
Second.
Christine Harper.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Parker.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Melch Davis.
Yes.
Yes, Kailin Morgan.
Yes.
Yes. If everybody would, I, I know we're so late, but let's just kind of be quiet for just a few more minutes, okay? I appreciate it. Mr. Brooks, this is yours.
Well, you're back in the building committee, met with Duck Town, who's like, we're real optimistic, we can work something out with them, sell to them their parts, or sell our parts to them. And I make a motion, ask the county director to pass you to start negotiating with them, the county attorney, to get the ball rolling, to get the sale to go through. Your convenience is under the bed. So that's my motion. That was a recommendation feeling.
Motion, Mr. Brooks, to authorize the... Second, by Melch Davis.
So Greg, I know you said it's as soon as possible in a week. Eric and I have already kind of been talking, and there's going to be some things that have to be laid out, possibly a call into the attorney general's office to make sure just everything is there. That's nothing that's not been done before in the past. So Eric would be working that out. As I've shared with Greg, I think a couple others have asked, I would assume that the cost would at least be fifty-fifty, because Duck Town will be using Eric for their part, Eric will be used on our part, unless you all as a commission will look at anything else. But it is my understanding that we'll use our county attorney and get this done. Hopefully, Eric is very optimistic to be able to have something on the fact that we can set this up.
Is Eric still Duck Town's attorney, question?
Yes.
If it's in a conflict, tell them what their action is.
And I know that the question came up, Danny had asked me above, as far as some of the IRS and all of those things, anything dealing with the property itself is clear for the county to do that. I do have that from Eric. If anybody would like to send that email, I would be sure to send that to you. But property is...
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker. Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Parker.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Melch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kailin Morgan.
Yes.
Yes. Motion approved. Now, some statements, anybody got anything? Appreciate everybody just preparing with us on that.
You a jury?
Yes.